Good evening, everybody. We will now reconvene from our closed session meeting. Ms. Inarim City Attorney, will you please report the closed session items?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. The City Council started early this evening because there was a long closed session agenda and called the meeting to order at 4:30 this afternoon with six items on the closed session agenda. The first two items were matters of workers' compensation claims, and the council discussed those and took no reportable action. The third item was a conference with labor negotiators regarding direction for labor negotiations with the Downey Police Management Association and took no reportable action. And a follow-up matter to that item is on the city's consent calendar in open session this evening. Item number four is conference with legal counsel about a matter of existing litigation and took no reportable action. And item number five is a conference with real property negotiators regarding property at 12214 Lakewood Boulevard, also taking no reportable action. Similarly, item number six, a real property negotiation regarding accessory parcel number 6254-019-029, the city council also taking no reportable action. And the closed session concluded at around 6:10 this evening.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Now, before we begin the open session of this special city council meeting, I'd like to remind members of the audience that anyone wishing to speak during our public comment period must obtain a number card from the city clerk. Lining up will not be permitted, and each speaker should remain in their seat until their number is called. The time clock will begin when you begin your comments. There are two colored number cards for this meeting, and the purple card will be used to speak during the public comment period for the public hearing item, and the pink card will be used to speak during the general public comment period. If you did not receive a number card in which to speak, please proceed to the back of the room, and city staff will be issuing you a number. I would also like to remind members of the public that the newly adopted ordinance number 22-1502, regulating the rules of conduct for city council meetings, is now in effect, and each speaker will have three minutes to address the council on agenda, consent calendar, and non-agenda items unless modified by the mayor. Copies of the meeting rules are located in the back of the room. Also, I would like to inform our public and our attendees that speech that is offensive, especially as we have families and children in attendance, will no longer be tolerated, and you will receive a warning if you choose to utilize speech that is offensive to members of the audience. And after the one warning, if you continue using that language, you will be removed from this council chamber. I would now like to call to order the open session of the special city council meeting. The time is 6:32. City Clerk Duarte, would you please take role?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Alvarez is excused. Councilmember Horn?
Present.
Councilmember Sosa?
Present.
Mayor Protem Trujillo?
Present.
And Mayor Prometa?
Present. I would like to turn it over to our Madam Inarim City Attorney regarding one additional item from our closed session report.
Thank you. I forgot to mention that on item number six, Mayor Protem Trujillo had a conflict of interest and left the room for discussion of item number six. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to call our chaplain for our Downey Police Department, Greg Welch, to lead us in the invocation. If we can please stand.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In the Book of Ephesians, the Book of Ephesians is oftentimes referred to as the Book of Agape Love, and I think that's very fitting for this Valentine's Day. And in that fourth chapter, Paul reminds us that we should make every effort to maintain the unity of the Spirit through the bond of peace. Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this yet again, an opportunity for the citizens of this city and the leaders of this city to come together to improve and better our city. We first and foremost want to thank our first responders, our police and fire, Lord, because they say yes to our protection every time they put the uniform on. We're grateful for Mr. Horn that has joined us tonight and welcome him to what is often considered a thankless job. Welcome, Mr. Horn, and thank you for your service coming up. Thank you for the citizens of this city, and lest we forget, Lord, the vigilance that it takes in our city to maintain the civility of our city. And lastly, Lord, speaking of civility, we ask that you speak to the hearts of those in this very room that may not choose civility. Would you speak to their hearts and calm them and let us know that you're here and that what needs to be done will be done through that very civility? In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Chaplain Welch. At this time, I would like to ask our newly appointed council member Timothy Horn to lead us in the flag salute.
Please your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands with my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. At this time, I know that it is Valentine's Day, and I am pleased to see members of the public and the audience here tonight and those watching the YouTube. Thank you for taking time out to be with us tonight. We promise to keep our comments short so we can move the agenda along in an efficient manner in that hopefully we can get out of here in a reasonable time. I will begin tonight with city council member announcements and requests for future agenda items, conference meeting reports, et cetera. I will go ahead and start to my far left with Councilmember Horn.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a request for a future within one-month period of an analysis just for the time of the preferred parking and when it starts for a future decision. It will be a very brief discussion, and upon hearing from what their public review is, we will make a decision at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Horn. Mayor Protem Trujillo?
Thank you. Good evening, Downey, and happy Valentine's Day to everyone. Thank you for being here. We know that you could be somewhere else with your families, but this shows how much you care, so we appreciate you coming out tonight. Couple of items I would like the staff to work on is we have the 55th celebration of the Carpenters coming up in April of 2024. I would like the staff to form, I'm calling it an ad hoc committee, I don't know if there's a different name that we should be using, but basically would be a committee set up just for this event, and I would like the following people to be invited to participate and be members of this ad hoc committee. It would be Kathy Perez, former mayor Rick Rodriguez, our representative from the library, which is Mr. Dickout, our social media coordinator, I'm not sure what her name is, I know we have, yes, the Chamber of Commerce, somebody from Downey Unified School District, particularly Downey High School, the downtown Downey Improvement District, and a representative from the Park and Rec. I would like the committee to be formed of those individuals and like to get those meetings up and running so we can start planning that amazing celebration for our city. I would also like Trader Joe's update. By now, hopefully, we have some information on what efforts have previously been made that have been documented. I want to know who, what council went to them, when, and what they say, and where are we at today? I understand that there are previous councils may have gone to Trader Joe's about 10 or 12 years ago. Well, let's go back, all right? But I want to know what happened then so we can fully prepare and start our public campaign. There's already been some media reaching out. We have them on hold because this needs to be planned well. It needs to be well-oiled, social media, tweets, and all that. We're going all out. I know that the YMCA is not on the agenda today. I understand it was pulled, we're having a meeting with them, but for sake of time and expediency, I'm going to ask that, I think I have to ask from the dais for the item for the next agenda, and that there's concurrence.
We assume that.
They're on it? All right. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor, for that. And just briefly, the Downey Night Market, congratulations to the city. Hopefully, this is a use that we had in mind when we developed or former councils developed the downtown Downey, really family-oriented, for families to come and enjoy the downtown Downey. It was great to see the hundreds, if not thousands, of people that were there. So congratulations. Remember, every second and fourth, the Downey Market, Downey Night Market will be happening on Downey Avenue between Second and Fourth from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. And the way I'm thinking about it is when I have council, that's on the Tuesdays, the second and the fourth Tuesdays of the month, I have the night market on Thursdays, and it'll be a great time, so hopefully we'll see you out there. I had an opportunity to visit the Southern California Resource Center. What a, I was even more proud to be your council member by visiting this location, which is located next to the Barbara J. Riley Center. I don't know if you've ever noticed it, but the amazing work that the center is doing, and I want to recognize Ignacio Gonzalez is here, the policy director for the Southern California Resource Center for Independent Living, people living with disabilities. I was just so proud that Downey houses, one of the first, created in 1979 for people living with disability. Americans, say what you will, but we take care of our children. have, yes, the Chamber of Commerce, somebody from Downey Unified School District, particularly Downey High School, the Downtown Downey Improvement District, and a representative from the Park and Rec. I would like the committee to be formed of those individuals and like to get those meetings up and running so we could start planning that amazing celebration for our city. I would also like Trader Joe's update. By now, hopefully, we have some information on what efforts have previously been made that have been documented. I want to know who, what council went to them, when, and what did they say, and where are we at today? I understand that there are previous councils may have gone to Trader Joe's about ten or twelve years ago. Well, let's go back, all right? But I want to know what happened then so we can fully prepare and start our public campaign. There's already been some media reaching out. We have them on hold because this needs to be planned well. It needs to be well-oiled, social media tweets and all that. We're going all out. I know that the YMCA is not on the agenda today. I understand it was pulled, we're having a meeting with them, but for sake of time and expediency, I'm going to ask that, I think I have to ask from the dais for the item for the next agenda, and that there's concurrence.
We assume that.
They're on it?
Yes.
All right, thank you so much, Madam Mayor, with that. And just briefly, the Downey Night Market, congratulations to the city. Hopefully, this is a, a use that we, we had in mind when we developed or former councils developed the Downtown Downey, really family-oriented, for families to come and enjoy the Downtown Downey. It was great to see the hundreds, if not thousands, of people that were there. So congratulations. Remember, every second and fourth, the Downey Market, Downey Night Market will, will be happening on Downey Avenue between Second and Fourth from five to nine P.M. And the way I'm thinking about it is when I have council, that's on the Tuesdays, the second and the fourth Tuesdays of the month, I have the Night Market on Thursdays, and it'll be a great time, so hopefully we'll see you out there. I had an opportunity to visit the Southern California Resource Center. What a, I was even more proud to be your council member by visiting this location, which is located next to the Barbara J. Riley Center. I don't know if you've ever noticed it, but the amazing work that the center is doing, and I want to recognize Ignacio Gonzalez is here, the Policy Director for the Southern California Resource Center for Independent Living, people living with disabilities. I, it was just so proud that Downey houses, one of the first, created in nineteen-seventy-nine for people living with disability. Americans, say what you will, but we take care of our children, our seniors, and people with disability, and I'm so glad that Downey plays an integral role. So if you know anyone, any families that have a member that might be living with disabilities, go there. It's eight-thirty to four-thirty. Walk in, they're very welcoming. Thank you for the invitation. Public Works is kicking it out of the ballpark. I know they're probably tired of me, but we're getting sidewalks fixed. I, 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 we're out there, and I'm seeing the work, and I, I just want to thank my council for the support. This is the largest infrastructure investment we've ever made, at one time, thirty million dollars on your residential streets, so just bear with us as we plow through it. It's still a multi-year plan to get the streets repaired. Attended good. One of our feathers in our hat is the Gangs Out of Downey program. We pride ourselves on the turnaround, especially graffiti removal in the city. Please use the app. We try to get it down within twenty-four hours. It starts with graffiti and it grows from there. There are some, there is some gang activity, we're monitoring it around Golden Park, okay? But we're on it, and what we do differently is that we also invest in prevention, all right? So we also believe in prevention, but we're also out there trying to crack down on people who are vandalizing our property. And just a shout out to Kathy for joining me and visiting the Carpenter home. It's been forty years since she left, and we don't forget Karen Carpenter in Downey, right Kathy? Thank you for being there. And that's all, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for a great report out, Mayor Protem Trujillo. To my far right, Councilmember Sosa.
Good evening. Thank you all for being here. Happy Valentine's Day. I just want to share some of the events that I've, events in the subcommittees that I've taken part in since our last council meeting. Did participate in a Contract Cities Legislative Meeting where the organization gives updates on bills and upcoming proposed bills that are coming down from Sacramento and how they affect all of us. Also, I did attend the Neighborhood Watch Block Captain's Meeting. My colleague Mayor Protem Trujillo was there as well, and we did get to speak and meet with some of the, the Watch Block Captains across the city, which was pretty significant because they haven't been able to meet for the past couple of years due to the pandemic. So it was good to meet them. And then we also got, again, Mayor Protem Trujillo and I got to meet with some of the volunteers for the L.A. County Annual Homeless, Homeless Count Initiative. So that was a nice experience in meeting some of the selfless volunteers that took part in that. Also, I did get to attend the H2 Innovation Experience of SoCal Gas. I know we have a representative here, Julia Emerson. There you are. You know, it's first hydrogen home built in North America, which is a nice feather in Downey's cap, so it was a great experience, and I believe Julia may want to touch more on that, so I won't steal her thunder. I did attend the New Mayors and Council Members Academy in Universal City, held by the League of California Cities, and topics discussed are just, I mean, this is, this is a lot of education for us new council members. And to me, it's highly recommended that all council members and mayors go as a refresher as well, very important topics such as harassment prevention, keys to good governance, open government and conflicts of interest, ethics laws and principles in a, in a public service environment, policy role in land use planning, civic engagement, and also financial and city revenues responsibility. All very important civic topics and responsibilities for us as elected officials. I also attended a meeting with the Downtown Subcommittee, and part of that discussion, discussion was the, the Night Market, as Mayor Protem Trujillo mentioned. We're all very excited about that, so it was the second and fourth Thursday. Yeah, so come by, check it out. We did, my wife and I and sons, and I saw some of my colleagues there, did get to experience that, and I think it's a really good thing for Downtown Downey and the corresponding businesses around the area. I did meet with the SELICO, which is Southeast L.A. County Workforce Development Board. They're doing a lot of great work. I'm, I'm going to be, I am part of that board. They're doing a lot of great work for our local workforce and providing resources for training and education, and again, they're doing a lot of great work, so stay tuned for more on that. I did attend the coffee with the Downey Unified Superintendent, Dr. John Garcia at Stofford Middle School, gave a lot of updates, and us parents, I am a parent of two Downey Unified School District students, I'm also a product of Downey Unified School District, and it was really great to see all the thing, the great things that they're doing over there. I also attended the Eco Rapid Transit Board of Directors Meeting. More to come on that. And I do manage to, to work and sleep in between all these meetings. I also attended the Gangs Out of Downey Good Meeting, which happens on a monthly basis, and as many, some of you may know that I was president of Gangs Out of Downey up until August of last year for a two-year period, so they do a lot of great work with, with respect to being proactive and providing intervention resources for our youth and our, and our families here in Downey. I did get to attend FatherCon this past weekend. Patrick Earlson and, and his group are really doing a great job in stressing the importance of having a father in the, in the household, and I was joined by my colleague, Madam Mayor Prometa. And I did, that same day, I did attend the swearing-in ceremony for, in Pico Rivera for Senator Barbara Archuleta, a lot of local and actually statewide elected officials there, so it was great to, to be a part of that. And also, yesterday, I did participate in a city hall tour here with Congressman Robert Garcia. Were able to share some of the funding priorities for our city, so stay tuned on that. And then in closing, I, I do want to compliment Ed Norris and the Public Works Department. I've gotten several emails from constituents for various, for various reasons, needing attention, and Ed Norris and the Public Works, Public Works Groups were, were, they were all over it, so thank you, Ed. Appreciate your help. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Sosa. And I tell you, we were going to keep our comments short. I, it's always a pleasure to, to come together and share with you some of the work that as your elected officials, we have the privilege of doing behind the scenes, and it really is a joy to represent you, Downey, in, in various boards and commissions. Part of our job here is, of course, helping move the city's business forward, but also we sit on numerous boards throughout the region, the Council of Governments, SCAG, Independent Cities Association, Eco Rapid, and, and many of the boards, I-5, Joint Powers Authority, and, and we are able to discuss with other elected officials what are some of the priorities for the region, but again, Downey has, where Downey also has important interests in mind. But before I get to all of that, I do want to welcome, a special welcome, several people in the audience, and all of you are very special. I do want to say thank you to Michael Calvert, the Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for being here. Also, I would like to say welcome and thank you for joining. This young man is, is really going to go far, and I know he's going to hate me for putting him on the spot, but he is my youth commissioner, Jordan Kurriel, and thank you for joining us tonight as well, as well with, with his dad. Also, the President of the Chamber of Commerce, Carmen Padilla, thank you for joining us tonight. The newly appointed representative for Assemblywoman Blanca Pacheco, Alfred Tovar, also Commissioner for our city, thank you for joining us tonight, and thank you all. It's, it's a pleasure to have you. Just a few items to share with all of you. I had the opportunity to go on a ride along with our Downey Police Department a couple of weeks ago, and really, what, what a, what a great thing to do, and I do encourage my council colleagues to do the same. I know many of us have done that in the past, but really, it gives us an opportunity to see what is happening out on the street and what are the experiences, what are some of the challenges our police department faces. We are dealing with a different landscape, and certainly, our police department has a lot on their hands. This city continues to grow by leaps and bounds, and, and we have, twenty years ago, we didn't have the promenade, we didn't have the landing. Our, our city has developed and has moved forward in a very positive way, but with that, additional challenges have come about. And so it, it was a really great opportunity. I want to thank our police chief, but also Lieutenant Bossi, as well as Officer Reyes, who were with me that evening. And I want to also let you know that it is important to attend the Neighborhood Watch meetings. We have a very robust program in the city of Downey. We have over two-hundred-and-thirty Neighborhood Watch meetings, and at any given moment, there is a Neighborhood Watch meeting in any one of the districts within our city. If you are interested, please contact Stephanie Arroyo to plan your next Neighborhood Watch meeting. I also had the opportunity, as my other colleagues mentioned, to attend the Downey Night Market. There will be an official ribbon-cutting of the Thursday night Downey Night Market, and that is scheduled for March ninth. Please mark your calendars. I also had the opportunity to attend Senator Bob Archuleta's swearing-in ceremony. I attended a Boy Scouts event, also FatherCon with, the main speaker for that afternoon was Father Greg Boyle from Homeboy Industries. And again, really a recognition to FatherCon, to Patrick, and, and the board at FatherCon for bringing up the, continuing to highlight the issue, awareness on human trafficking, but also the issue that fathers matter. Eighty-five percent of youth in prison today come from a fatherless home. Ninety percent of homeless youth in America across our country come from fatherless homes, either homeless or runaways. And so the importance of fathers, father figures and mentors cannot be overemphasized, and that was really the theme of Saturday's program. I want to say thank you to the, our fire department, our police department, and the departments that were able to join us for Congressman Robert Garcia's visit yesterday here at City Hall. As Councilmember Sosa indicated, we discussed with him some of the priorities that Downey as a city has on various projects. As you know, we have our own water wells, twenty, for that, and we, we are in need of assistance on various projects, and we need federal grants and, and federal assistance monies to complete and move forward with those projects that will be beneficial to our city. I would like to invite members of the public to participate in this Saturday's Keep Downey Beautiful Cleanup, as well as February twenty-fifth, a week from this Saturday, we will have the TLC 5K is back in person after a three-year hiatus, and I also would like to ask staff, I know Councilmember Trujillo has been discussing the, the Trader Joe's opportunity and what we would like to be. I would also like to look into Sprouts and, and see where we are with, with that possibility. I know we have, members of the public continue to email us and ask us, why is it that we have various vacant lots available in our city, and what's happening with those vacant lots? Let me tell you, sometimes some of these projects do take time, and we are working diligently to get those moving forward. With, with Downey going in a new direction, with a new city manager on board coming up soon, and new individuals in specific areas, I think those, many of those projects will be moving forward in that direction. So with all of that said, I, we don't have any, that will conclude my comments tonight. We don't have any presentations. I didn't want to hold us up with presentations tonight. In fact, I didn't think people would want to come and receive a commendation from the mayor on Valentine's Day, so we will reconvene those presentations for the next February twenty-eighth council meeting. There is one, before I move on to the public hearing item, I would like to turn it over to our city manager, interim city manager Scott, who I'm very grateful for, and I'm very, very thankful for, for your service.
Roger is here. Do you want to point out what others to people in the audience?
Okay. Well, I, I, yes, I, it is my great pleasure to point out that someone that I, I'm very, very, very happy and very pleased to have in our audience tonight is Roger Bradley is with us tonight. I didn't want to put him on the spot, but now I did. And turning it over to you for your comments.
I'll be very quick. I, I wanted to make sure that, that we got to introduce Roger while there's still people in the audience, because it seems like when I finish my comments, everybody leaves. No, that's not true. Thank you. I, I don't have much to report on. I do want to just acknowledge that I got Mr. Horn's suggestion for a future agenda report on the preferential parking, and my understanding is the council's agreeable to that. The same thing with the Carpenter's Celebration, we will put that on the next agenda for the city council to take formal action on it. The Trader Joe's update, Ms. Landevazo actually provided a report in her last week, and so we'll get that spruced up and, and bring that forward for the council to look at, and certainly, we agree that Sprouts is, is another company that we're very interested in. And as we said, the YMCA issue will be on the next agenda. I, I've been in a habit in making my reports of giving status on the city manager recruitment, so we're, we're glad that we have an item later in the agenda on, on the contract, so that's a little premature, but I wanted everybody to know he was here. And I'm very excited that the city council has come up with a very solid citizen and professional city manager to take over with the city. We're all excited about that. I also have been commenting regularly on such projects as the Manzanar barricade, and I will tell you that yesterday, had a chance to meet with the fencing contractor that the city uses to go to phase two in that test of the barricade, which will be a more substantial barricade that keeps people from being able to go in and out around the sides. We're still suffering from, from people parking in front of people's homes late at night, playing the radio and dropping their trash in the neighborhood. So we're going to see if we can, we can make a difference with the fencing opportunity. And the other thing I've been coming in on recently, because they've become good regulars, and we appreciate the Haida family, all three tonight, so we're, we're happy to have you again, and we continue to, I have not yet got a report back on, on what options we have in terms of that dangerous curve next to their home, but we will certainly, yes, and we will certainly be bringing that back. It's a little complicated because there's two cities involved, and having two cities involved is, is like five times more complicated than just one. So we're going to see if we can't get something and bring that back, so that's my update. Thank you very much.
Thank you, interim city manager Scott. One more thing I, I did not include in my ask for future agenda items, and that is our city celebrated two years ago the sixty-fifth anniversary since its incorporation. However, this year, the city of Downey celebrates a hundred-and-fifty years since it was founded. So I would like to, I know there is something in the works, but I would like to, to explore what is it that we are looking at in terms of celebration. This is a huge milestone for our city. Thank you. Our one public hearing, hearing this evening is amendment to the Downey Municipal-
Our one public hearing this evening is amendment to the Downey Municipal Code regarding a historic preservation ordinance. And this will be to introduce an ordinance of the city council of the city of Downey, adding Chapter 10 to Article 9 of the Downey Municipal Code, establishing historic preservation standards in the city and determining the ordinance to be exempt from CEQA. The hour having arrived, the public hearing is now open. The time is 7:01. Who will be giving the report?
I believe it's being introduced by Art Baschmackian, who is our city planner on interim basis. Everybody, all of us around here carry the title interim. But Art's been doing a great job trying to cover for us on a temporary basis. And I believe there's a consultant online as well that you will introduce?
Yes.
Thank you.
The hour having arrived, the public hearing is now open. The time is 7:02.
Mayor, can we take a quick motion and second to receive and file the publication?
Yes, I will make a motion. I need a second.
Second.
Okay. Please vote.
The motion is approved with Councilmember Alvarez absent.
Thank you. City planner, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, council members. This item is consideration of a historic preservation ordinance, which was directed to be studied by the city council. It's also directed by the general plan, which the council has adopted years earlier. The city contracted with a reputable consulting firm, GPA Consulting, who prepared the draft ordinance, that's before you. And I will introduce Jenna Kuscher, who will be making a presentation virtually. And she was prepared also to answer questions on the draft ordinance, and so is in-house staff. Thank you.
Good evening. This is Jenna Kuscher from GPA Consulting. I'll begin my presentation. I just want to confirm that my screen is visible?
Yes, we see it. Thank you.
Okay, with that, let's begin then. Hello, council members, and thank you very much for having me here today. My name is Jenna Kuscher, and I'm an architectural historian and a preservation planner with GPA Consulting. We're a full-service environmental planning firm with specialized teams in historic preservation and biology. And I've been with GPA since 2013. Also on the line tonight is Andrea Galvin, the president and principal architectural historian of GPA, and she'll also be available to assist with any questions the council might have. So city planning staff have asked me here today to give you an overview of the draft Downey Historic Preservation Ordinance that you'll be considering tonight. During the presentation, I'll provide a brief overview of its contents, important definitions, To begin, here's how the draft was prepared. So at the direction of council, planning staff contracted with GPA to assist in preparation of a draft ordinance. GPA consulted with staff. We also consulted the California Office of Historic Preservation Guidance on the topic. We also did a survey of existing ordinances in other jurisdictions. We then prepared an initial draft for staff consideration. That was revised with the assistance of the city attorney by staff. Staff also presented it to the Planning Commission in draft form in September of This is an overview of the major sections of the ordinance. That's in Attachment A of the staff report. We'll discuss each of these sections in turn. So there's two key goals for the ordinance. The first is to implement the Downey General Plan, specifically Program Number 8421, which reads, "Adopt a historic preservation ordinance that would require a permit to demolish or modify a historic resource." And the second is to protect known historic resources in the city, as well as those that might be identified by the city in the future. So on the screen here are just some of the key definitions for understanding the ordinance, but I would like to note that there are additional terms identified in the ordinance text. Most importantly, historic resource. What does that mean for the purpose of this ordinance? A historic resource is a property that is listed in or formally determined eligible for the National Register of Historic Places or the California Register of Historical Resources. There's a few ways in which that can happen. Properties can be officially listed on the National or California Register by nomination. There's also a couple of ways in which properties come to be formally determined eligible for listing. For the National Register, this sometimes happens as part of a federal regulatory process, such as Section 106, or as part of a federal historic preservation tax certification. For the California Register, properties can be formally determined eligible by the State Historic Resources Commission or by the State Historic Preservation Officer. So in addition to these properties that might be listed in or firmly determined eligible for the National and California registers, the ordinance also sets out that properties can be designated by resolution of the Planning Commission if they meet specified criteria. And we'll talk about those specific criteria on a next slide. Another important definition is that of project, both major and minor. Major projects are reviewed by the Planning Commission, and those are projects that include demolition or significant alterations or additions to the primary elevation. Minor projects are to be reviewed by the city planner, and those are projects that include removal of nonoriginal exterior features or replacement in kind of original features. And finally, demolition or demolition by neglect. Demolition involves the complete or substantial removal of a property, whereas demolition by neglect is severe deterioration of a property, whether that's by willful or unintentional Moving on to the next section of the ordinance, it discusses the Planning Commission's authority. The Planning Commission would have the authority to review applications for demolition, major projects, any appeal of minor projects that were first reviewed by the city planner, as well as an economic hardship waiver. That's a process I'll talk about later as well. In addition to reviewing these applications, the Planning Commission would also have the ability by resolution to designate historic resources subject to the ordinance, provided that they met certain criteria. And those are that the property is at least 50 years old, that the property can be demonstrated to have been associated with persons or events significant in local, state, or national history, or that the property embodies distinctive characteristics of a type, style, or period of architecture or method of construction. The next section of the ordinance talks about minimum maintenance requirements. The owner or the person in charge of a historic resource does have a duty to keep the property in good repair in order to prevent deterioration, which is demolition by neglect. Minimum maintenance requirements are focused on keeping the property watertight and structurally sound. This helps to protect the loss of historic resources, which, as I mentioned on one of the first slides, is the purpose of the ordinance. Aside from other enforcement remedies that I'll discuss in a future slide, there really is a strong incentive to keep the property in good repair because major and minor projects, demolition, and economic hardship waivers cannot be granted to properties that don't meet minimum maintenance requirement. So there is an approval called a certificate of appropriateness, or sometimes COA for short, that would be required for all major or minor projects, for demolition and for relocation. As mentioned before, the minor projects are reviewed by the city planner and the major projects are reviewed by the Planning Commission. I'd like to talk about some of the findings that would be required for each of these project types. For alteration or new construction, the finding would be compliance with the Secretary of the Interior Standards for the Treatment of Historic Properties. And the standards are a set of industry standards that are issued by the National Park Service. They're used to judge how properties can accommodate change to historic resources in a way that also protects their historic character. For demolition or relocation, the finding requirement would be that the project would not cause a substantial adverse change as defined by CEQA. And the general test for CEQA for impacts historical resources is that the project would modify the property's character, the finding features, to the extent that the property would no longer qualify for designation. If that were true about a project, that would be a substantial adverse change for CEQA. Also in the case of, sorry about that, also in the case of demolition, there is an additional finding that needs to be made. As mentioned before, the minimum maintenance requirements had to have been met for the property, and it has to be demonstrated that there's the presence of severe structural damage, or there's no economically feasible use for the property, or there's a compelling public interest to justify demolition. The next section of the ordinance goes into detail about the economic hardship waiver that was mentioned previously. And this process is really intended to ensure that the denial of a certificate of appropriateness would not create undue hardship on the owner of a historic resource. The ordinance does identify application materials that are required to support findings for economic hardship. Some examples of information needed for the waiver application are cost estimates for the desired project versus the project that would comply with the COA, estimated market value of the property in its current condition versus after the desired project versus the project that would comply with the COA, and other financial documents that you'll see listed there in the ordinance pack. Aside from the application materials, the ordinance also does identify the required findings for the waiver, which include, but are not limited to, that denial of the COA would leave the property with substantially no value, that sale, rental, or reuse of the property is impractical, and that all city-sponsored incentives had been explored for feasibility. Some examples of city-sponsored incentives might be building or zoning code modifications or financial or technical assistance. And the final section of the ordinance discusses enforcement and remedies. These are the methods that are included to allow the city to be able to enforce the ordinance when violations occur. Violations of the requirements of the ordinance are a misdemeanor and are liable for civil penalties. A civil penalty for demolition would be equal to one-half the assessed value of the property. The civil penalty for alteration would be equal to one-half the cost of restoration. The city will also issue a temporary development moratorium on a property for up to two years from the date of a violation, and they seek injunctive relief to restrain a violation or to provide complete or partial restoration of a violation. Thank you for your time. This concludes my presentation. My colleague Andrea and I are available to assist the staff and council with questions.
Thank you for your presentation. I appreciate that. I do have a question to start with. With this particular ordinance, and I know this has been a very long time coming for the city of Downey, if you look at our general plan, it dates back to 2005. And so I think we've been, we're only, what, 18 years? 18 years. It's taken us a little bit. But having said this, I would like to know if there were other cities that were looked at that have these sort of ordinances? And again, I know that we are starting, you know, we have a baseline, and this is the beginning of an ordinance for the city of Downey. But did we think about establishing or including within our ordinance having a dedicated historic preservation commission? I know everything goes through our planning commission. And, but as I, as I look at, and again, the line items or the number of properties we currently have are such few to start with, that perhaps that wasn't, you know, necessarily considered. But as we move forward, and again, I realize, forgive me for talking in circles, I'm trying to get my thoughts together here. I know this is the beginning of an ordinance, but I wondered if part of this beginning, there would be an opportunity to amend or have something that includes the establishment of a historic preservation commission? Because when we talk about, you know, the historical preservation of properties, you do need, you know, individuals with that passion and that background and the know-how and perhaps, you know, some architectural background. And again, our planning commission deals with, on a regular basis, with different types of reviews, of requests. So I'm going to stop now and see if you all considered something like that to include in our ordinance.
Should I speak, or should I allow Art to speak first? What would you prefer?
It's up to you.
Okay, well, I'll start then, and if Art would like to add anything, he can. Yes, we did look at ordinances of several neighboring municipalities in addition to the draft ordinance that we prepared for you. Some that we looked at included the city of Pasadena, city of Santa Monica, city of Whittier. We also reviewed that state guidance that I referenced. And there is flexibility at the local level to have the decision-making body be either a standalone body, which could be called Historic Preservation Commission, Historic Review Board, there's a few different names that are used. There is also the opportunity for an existing board to take on that role. One example would be city of Hermosa Beach. Their city council acts as their historic review board. In the city of San Clemente, their planning commission serves as both design review and historic review board. So I think that it's really an opportunity to tailor it to the needs and the resources of your city. Some things to be, to consider would be, do you have staff resources available to serve as the staff liaison for an additional board? Do you have sufficient individuals in the community who would be willing to serve on the board? And do you have a caseload that would really necessitate having an additional board? Or is the caseload such that it can be handled by an existing board? So there are options. The state guidance does not say that one is necessarily better than the other. It does speak to the fact of having a well-rounded board with both community members as well as individuals of different professions represented, including, if possible, someone with training and expertise in historic preservation, although that may not always be possible depending on the size of your city.
Okay, thank you. And again, I think that that is important to note, realizing that historical preservation ordinances are, can be, you know, very complex and include a broad range of properties. But seeing that, you know, Downey, we've been trying to move in this direction for a long time, and this is the beginning, I just want to make sure that we do have that, that, not flexibility, but that we can create perhaps a historical preservation commission to be able to oversee this. Absolutely.
I don't, I don't want to jump in before you've done your public hearing, but I think from a staff standpoint, and I've had lots of experience in a lot of cities with historic preservation, as has city attorney. I would recommend that you very seriously think about doing a study session soon on this topic. I think this ordinance is very appropriate for adoption. It's a starter ordinance, as I've called it. It's the, it's the first step in what I think you will eventually decide to expand upon. That's my guess, I don't know that. And, and I think you should at some point have a study session to really delve I think this ordinance is very appropriate for adoption. It's a starter ordinance, as I've called it. It's the first step in what I think you will eventually decide to expand upon. That's my guess. I don't know that. And I think you should at some point have a study session to really delve into those different ways that cities do it. For instance, we've not got a full survey of historic places. And that's a good first step. And once you adopt the ordinance, a very good first step is to get a real solid survey done by a firm that's expert in that business. It's not as expensive as it sounds. And you get some public feedback that way, too. So you hear from different people about their... Not only their support for it, but also their concerns about it. So you can take that into consideration before you decide where else to go. There are a number of different ways to put together a board to review it. And I think ultimately, the planning commission's going to be too busy to want to do a lot of this. The council will be... Although, there's a lot of cities that do have planning commission do it, a lot of cities that do have councils do it. But ultimately, it's a lot easier when you get in with a body that's really got the expertise. It's real hard to find and to keep people with that expertise. For one thing, if you're an architect working in that city, you may have so many conflicts, it's very difficult to do that role. And it's hard... Some cities actually pay people to be on the review board, and I don't think that's a bad idea. And so I think you need to have time to really look at all these options. For tonight, we brought this forward. First of all, it's been so long in the making, we didn't want to stop it. But I think it's a good first step. It's worth adopting. And then you can take the time to really study it and look at the different ways it can evolve for the community. So that's why we brought it in. But I absolutely believe there's more work yet to be done on this.
Thank you.
Sorry, that was too long.
City Manager Scott. No, thank you. Appreciate it. Council members, comments, questions? Yes.
I have to warn you, it's a multi-tier question, multi-questions, so please bear with me. Based upon the definition, demolition or removal is consistent. If you remove the building or structure, would that disqualify it as a historic property? And so, let's say the structure is found, but the ground is saturated, but by replacing, removing it to a new location, would that mean it's under the definition demolition? Because it's being removed, because the ground is saturated, for a structure that's well fortified, and thus leaving the possibility of being included in a historical building? And then the other one will have to do with the authority. So if you want to address that first...
Yes, Jenna, did you catch Councilmember Horn's question?
My understanding of the question is, would a relocation of a historic building be considered demolition?
Correct.
Is that clear?
Yes, that's correct.
It would be. Okay. So...
Oh, that was...
She's agreeing to your question. Yes, she understood it correctly. Go ahead, Jenna.
But I would say that relocation of a historic resource would not necessarily have to be demolition. If the relocation were done in such a way that a suitable new site was selected that had aspects of the setting in its original location that could be compatible with the historic building in its new location, and if it were moved in a way that it not caused damage to the building or its character defining features, it would be possible to relocate a historic resource to a compatible new site.
Without being called demolition?
Without demolishing it, yes. It could be... Sometimes buildings are moved wholly, sometimes they're partially deconstructed and then reconstructed in their new location.
Because in my example, the structure is sound, but the foundation is poor. So we want to relocate a already classified historic structure to a new location where the foundation is better. So we're not losing the classification of the historic event because it's being removed to a new location.
There are a number of different considerations that you would want to consider in relocating a historic building. You would think about the reasons why it's significant, its setting, and if the building is stable enough to be relocated to its new location. It's something that would probably be handed more on a case-by-case basis using the findings for such a project, which would be the Secretary of the Interior's standards for the treatment of historic properties.
Okay. Because your definition shows that it's considered a demolition if it's removed from its property. Under Section 9970?
9970, okay.
Section D, subsection 1, complete demolition or removal of a building, structure, or site, or object is considered demolition.
Okay. I guess it would hinge on if removal and relocation are the same word.
Because in my example, the structure is sound, but the foundation is poor, and we want to move that historical, whatever it is, to a new location.
Yeah. I can tell you that in real life, what you hope for in these circumstances, it's the people come in and apply for a permit, and they don't just go out and do it. And when they come in, they apply for the permit, then you walk through with them what the different opportunities are for dealing with it, addressing it. And if it's something that has to go before the review body, whatever it is, then you do. If it's something that'd be dealt with at a staff level, then you do that. But you try to deal with these things case by case, because as you say, they're not all... It's very difficult to write definitions that describe everything possible under every scenario.
Possible scenario.
Yeah. So I think that's how it would happen, where you have to go out and take action and then come in and ask later. And that's one reason why we want to get an ordinance on the books, so that we actually have process to follow when people come in. We have something we can tell them.
I'm glad you brought that up, because I was thinking about Harvey's boiler. Years ago, it was being demolished without the proper authority and permit, and we had to go in and save it before it got completely demolished.
Thank you. Mayor Pretend to hear you.
I think that was Johnny's boiler, right?
It's got multiple names.
Okay. Here's my take on the ordinance. Yeah, I worry about too much government. I worry about us trying to go and declare someone's home, a historic home, and now we're into like the takings clause part of the Constitution, right? And I hope we're not about that. I love the idea of surveying and seeing what treasures we have here in our city, but I want to make it clear that if the intent of this ordinance is to like, especially residences, it's going to be difficult for me. But I would like to get it started. So I don't know if we need further readings, but I would like to make a motion that we adopt the ordinance with an amendment.
Oh, Mayor Pretend to hear you. I would love to entertain your motion, except we've got to do public comment.
Too soon. All right.
And I do have additional questions.
Okay, I tried, but let's go ahead.
And I don't think we are about government overreach, and I think that it's been a long time coming. Downey unfortunately has lost precious historic properties that, without historical preservation ordinance, we could not save. But Councilmember Horn, I know you have one more question.
I have one more additional question on that. It goes to Section 9972 and Section 9974. The actual authority is all given to the planning commission. And as you read Section 9974, they have almost the complete authority to do whatever they want, given the public hearing, and the only recourse is under the appeal and a possible lawsuit. I do not want to bypass our duties, the city manager, the city attorney, and the council's authority to foresee what the final solution should be.
Right. And you bring up a good point, Councilmember Horn. In this particular piece, and that is a very, very valid question, but any of these situations, we are the governing body. And so they may have under their scope, but anything that is...
Still has to come to us.
It has to come to us. Yes, we are the final authority on this. And correct me if I'm wrong, Jenna, as you prepare this ordinance, again, anytime in our city, you know, the planning commission makes a motion to pass XYZ that the council does not agree with, we have...
On appeal, it would go to the council.
On appeal, it would go to the council. But I think that...
And you can appeal.
But this Councilmember Horn's point is a valid one in terms of giving the planning commission sole authority and oversight over this historic preservation.
So with regard to designating properties as historic resources, my understanding of the Section 9974 is that the planning commission could do that by resolution, but that that action could be appealed, and that it would be appealed under Downey Municipal Clause, Section 9806, which I believe would bring the decision to the city council, but that should be verified perhaps by a city attorney or someone else more knowledgeable.
And that is correct. That is correct.
So the appeal, under that Section 9806, that is after the appeal, but we're trying to avoid going to the appeal process?
No, the appeal is an appeal hearing before the city council. So there'd be a public hearing.
Okay. So they're not... They don't have the complete authority, and then we have to appeal to say we think something is different?
Yes.
Someone would appeal the decision to the city council, and then there'd be a second public hearing here.
So we don't have to take an appeal outside?
No.
No, no, no. It comes to the city council.
Okay. I just want to understand that the way it's written is kind of ambiguous. Thank you. That concludes my questioning.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I just want to say that I think it's... I mean, it's been a long time coming, and it's a good start for an ordinance. I think some would like to see more teeth to an ordinance like this, but it's a good start in the right direction, and it's going to take some time and some studies. That concludes my comment.
Thank you, Councilmember Sosa. I will now open it up for public comment. City Clerk, did we get any written public comment regarding this item?
We did, Mayor. We have written correspondence from Adrian Scott Fein, Senior Director of Advocacy from the Los Angeles Conservancy. The correspondence is in support of adoption of the historic preservation ordinance with the request of an amendment to the ordinance to include the formation of a historic preservation commission, and to request a historic resources survey or historic context statement.
Okay.
And that's all we have.
I will make a motion. I need a second to receive and file the written public document.
Second.
Thank you. Please vote.
The motion to receive and file is approved with Councilmember Alvarez absent.
Okay. I will open up for public comment regarding this public hearing item. Members of the public wishing to address the city council meeting regarding this public hearing must remain seated until your number is called. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the council. City Clerk, how many speakers do we have regarding this item?
We have a total of six, Mayor.
Okay. Speaker number one may come forward.
Good evening. Happy Valentine's Day. And what a wonderful opportunity it is for me to publicly profess my love for Downey tonight. My name is Kathy Perez, and I love many things about Downey. But what I love most is that which truly makes it Downey and not like any other place on earth. It's what I call the face of Downey. It's Downey's many historical and cultural resources. They can outlive us if we protect them and preserve them for the generations to come. And that's what you are doing by introducing this historic preservation ordinance. You are protecting the face of Downey, preserving it and giving it a future. This is something that I and many others have been waiting for and advocating for for the last 20 years. So on behalf of the Downey Conservancy and the Los Angeles Conservancy, we thank you and we applaud you for the work you have done so far. But we do have a concern about this ordinance in its present state. Our concern is that the planning commission and the city planner are designated as the reviewing bodies. If you look at the historic preservation ordinances adopted by cities such as Whittier, Huntington Park, Pasadena, Long Beach, and others, the reviewing body is the Historic Resources or Preservation Commission. And it's not just me or the Downey Conservancy or the Los Angeles Conservancy that are telling you to include a Historic Resources or Preservation Commission. Most importantly, it is our general plan, Vision 2025, which dictates it. In Chapter 8 of the plan, the goal is enhance Downey's cultural resources, and the first policy is to identify the city's cultural resources. The programs or actions which should be taken to implement this policy includes, and I quote, "establish a council-appointed commission to address cultural resources issues such as public art, historical preservation, and architectural resources." Without the inclusion of a historic preservation commission, we believe the proposed historic preservation ordinance before you will be ineffective and should not be adopted. If it is amended to include the Historic Preservation Commission as the reviewing body, we will fully, happily support it and encourage you to adopt it. We all love Downey and all that makes it distinctly Downey, and Downey deserves the best. It deserves an effective ordinance that will finally, fully protect its many cultural and historical resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Speaker number two may come up, please.
So how do we justify what Ms. Shaw from the GPA draft regarding the demolition and the neglect of what we call historic facilities? Well, let me give you an example. From 1.5 million to 1.7 at a time during 1900 at Reeves Mansion, that plantation has just gone from bad to worse in the hands of multiple exchanges of idiots that allowed this mansion to fall apart. And so without the proper justification to spend not thousands, but millions of dollars to put it in its historic glory, we're simply saying, fuck the people of Downey.
Okay, can we stop the clock now?
Use the money.
I will... This is your first and only warning, Mr. Herman.
I'm sorry. You're stopping the clock for what reason?
Because you're using...
You're interrupting my public comment, ma'am. And I only have three minutes.
Your language is offensive to the families and the children here. This is your only warning. If you will use...
Ma'am, if it's offensive, you should get up and step out if I'm completing my three minutes.
Can we get this gentleman removed if he is going to... If you don't let me speak, this is my council chambers, and I gave you the warning. Senate Bill 1100... Did you stop the clock? Senate Bill 1100 says, "Offensive language is not a protected speech, at least not when there's children and families present in this audience." If you choose that language, Mr. Herman, you will be removed from this council chambers. If you choose that language, Mr. Herman, you will be removed from this council chambers. That is your one warning. If you continue, you will be removed. You have two minutes on the clock.
Wow. So we have, so we have a tyrant for a mayor that doesn't believe in constitutional free speech anymore. So you have to temper it down and put your tail between your legs, and if you're not a man, you don't have a penis, because to justify--
Okay, I need, I need this individual--
To justify how the city planner--
Excuse me.
--and the Planning Commission--
Stop.
--deal with the way we--
Can we get this individual removed?
Why, why do you have my, my clock stopped again?
That's an anatomical word, not a derogatory term.
Okay, I told you that's offensive language to the families and the children present. I told you that.
No, you did not. You said using--
I said offensive language.
--a four-letter word was offensive.
And these are, the municipal code rules are in the back of the room.
Listen, Mayor, are you going to allow me to finish my talk rather than interrupt?
Nope, you will be escorted out of this council chamber because you do not follow the rules. Senate Bill 1100, signed by Governor Newsom, says so. And you continue to use offensive language that is offensive to this audience.
So you're saying offensive language disrupts the meeting, and that, and you're not going to tolerate--
Offensive language disrupts the meeting.
You're not going to tolerate it like they speak in Phelps versus Snyder?
That--
Or Brandon Berg versus Ohio--
In a court of law, mister, you will not be allowed to speak this way.
A dirty nigger is not offensive.
I need this man removed.
That's Brandon Berg versus Ohio, U.S., 395, 444, 1969.
I need--
A dirty nigger, and all I'm trying to do is preserve and save America--
We're gonna, we're gonna take a break.
--to build something that's--
We're gonna take a recess right now.
--worth dealing with instead of your unconstitutional belief, you fucking bitch.
Alvin? Okay, we are ready. The next speaker, please. Speaker number three.
Can I just get finished?
And I will warn you, any offensive language will receive one warning.
Okay, well, I haven't done that yet, so--
Okay. Just want to make sure you know.
Now, there's a few things about this ordinance that, one was a point brought up by Mario, believe it or not, and that is, you're using your police powers, you could be taking away somebody's land, their property, their real estate, but, and it would be a violation of due process, because you're not, you're not condemning the land for a superhighway or widening of a road that would be done by eminent domain, but you would be ordering them to do certain things on the property that they would not be able to either afford, and the appeal process would not work for them, things like that. So we really do have to look at that. A separate commission would be a decent idea with people like historians, builders, appraisers, real estate agents, those who know the field, various forms of construction. Now, we'll go into properties that are way over 50 years. Now, drywall is a new concept by comparison. Do we have to go back to plaster the walls? That's something to look at. Hey, wait, we didn't have asphalt roads in those days of this 150-year-old city. We had dirt roads. We didn't have motor vehicles. We had horse and buggy, just like a guy once wrote 40 years ago a book, "The Good Old Days." They were terrible. He was commenting about New York. You had horse and buggy. Well, horse is poop. So therefore, instead of having smog in the air, you had horse poop all over the streets, just an example. Now, to preserve things, let's say this was in Hollywood. Would they have to take the iconic Hollywood sign and add the words, the letters L-A-N-D for the original Hollywood land area? There was really a development, a development gimmick to get people to buy homes in the area. I mean, there's, removing a property maybe because your ground is contaminated, well, you dig up the ground, and you put, you fill it in, and you put the structure there on clean ground in case it was used for something that shouldn't have been used for. I mean, there's a lot of things in this ordinance that you just aren't looking at. And I'll give an example, a brief one. You have to, to get your historical credit, have to preserve one wall. Well, go along Santa Monica Boulevard in Hollywood and look at that Eastman Kodak Building. I watched in the 80s as they tore down three walls. They kept the front wall, and they built the whole structure around it. Is that historical? Well, maybe by law, but it's really a building built in 84.
Thank you.
What about this card?
You can leave it there. Thank you. Speaker number four, please.
I'm going to keep my comment short. I'm for it. Are you, okay. I'm for it. I'm just, I come to these meetings, I've been in the service, I fight for the very rights of freedom of speech that some people abuse, and they want to speak their opinion in a city they have no business in, don't pay taxes in, other than they buy a little gas and maybe some fast food. I would apologize for their ignorance, their incompetence, and their stupidity for calling the council what they did, especially you, Mayor. I think it's repulsive. I am what Downey represents. I am, believe in the Downey Council, I believe in the citizens of Downey. I don't think the Planning Commission should have total grasp and control. Authority and power is a very scary thing, and if you get too much of it, you have problems. The only problem I have is, he did bring up a point with that little Reeves house, well, the big Reeves house, I call it little, but I don't know whose idea it was to put a cafe, coffee shop on the property. I saw that in the paper, and my wife looked at me and started yelling at me like I'd built it. So anytime you guys make a mistake, I have to hear it because my wife reads that little paper. But I, I'm for it, and I think that the city manager's idea of having a commission, I would believe in a commission. I don't want to say the planning is putting the wolf over the sheep, but it's the blind leading the blind. If they don't know anything about historic, that's like me standing in the middle of my garage and telling you, "Well, I'm a car." Well, no, I'm not. I'm just an idiot standing in the middle of my garage. So, you know, I support it, and I know it's in its infancy, and I appreciate that. I do appreciate, you know, that we're finally doing something to preserve these old wretched buildings. But again, I just, I don't agree with what this fellow said here. I could drink a whole bottle of Metamucil, and I still wouldn't give a crap what he said. It's disgusting. It's very saddening.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Speaker number five. Yes, thank you.
Well, that's his right. He doesn't have to give a crap what he says, and that's okay. But he has a right to speak what he wants to speak, too. Some may think it's offensive, some may not, some may not even care. I've officiated high school and college basketball. There's nothing anybody in here is going to say that's going to change my mind about anything. You've seen the ducks at Wilderness Park, right? You see that water just beat up on them, and it just rolls right off. Anyway, I think you're just starting out with this. You have, I don't, I don't, I'm not sure if you understand the, the impact of where this is going. This is a monumental task, because there were some good points brought up about removal and demolition. It's, one thing that's overlooked that wasn't mentioned except by Mr. Greenspan was the land. That's what's being negotiated here is the land. We can take that same historical house, and if the Secretary of the Interior says, "Well, I want to move it from Downey to Idaho," it's going to lose a lot of value, right? Because of the land negotiations. Think about that for a while. And not only the rights of eminent domain, the person that owns the property, they, hey, they have rights, they have mineral rights, whatever. What about, how high do their rights go? What can fly over their property? What rights do they have? Does anybody know? No, nobody knows. Okay. So we need more public hearings? That's what we need public hearings for. We don't need planning commissions that can only meet, you know, once in a while because there's no business in Downey. There is none. They're canceling meetings all the time. And quite frankly, they just rubber stamp a lot of whoever appoints them from the council to do their bidding, and they just, they don't read the permits, they don't read the requests, they don't go out and walk the situations that they're looking at and voting on. I think you need to slow down and take a little more time and consider what you're looking at, and I think we're just starting out on this situation, and there's a long way to go. And I, I don't think that we've thought a lot of these things through, and it sounds like even the young lady that gave the seminar there, I don't think she knows the answers, and I don't think anybody here knows the answers either. Okay, so just, it's a start, but be ready to do a lot of work, do a lot of digging up the weeds out of the flowerbed, and learn a few things. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any more speakers? Speaker number six regarding the public hearing.
Okay, so before I comment on the substance of this public hearing, I want to comment on the mayor's violations of the law--
This is not, no, no, no.
--in this public hearing. In this public hearing, Speaker number two was silenced under the pretense of SB 1100. There is nothing in 1100 prohibiting, quote, "offensive speech." It talks about disruptions, but the disruption didn't come from the speaker, the disruption came from the mayor. The mayor objected to a word that can be found in anatomy, biology textbooks right across the street over here at the high school, and the middle school, and even the elementary school. Like, that's an anatomical term, and yet the mayor pretended that it was some disruptive offensive word, and then lied about the law, which doesn't even provide for that. So that is just so egregious that you would do this, you know, during this great publicly protected time of the public hearing, which I will now comment on. So first, it is amazing to see, for the first time in the recent history of this council, which I'd say is basically from 2020 onward, for the first time, we seem to have a council member that actually reads the agenda, everything that the staff takes many, many hours to prepare. That is, of course, Mr. Horn. Wow, that was really impressive, that Mr. Horn went all the way down, could cite a specific, you know, little section and talk about the definition, so, you know, he, he did his homework, which, that has never happened in the modern history of Downey. No other council member has questioned the staff or the overpaid consultants in regards to anything like this. So I found that very, very impressive, and I could tell that the other council members were highly displeased. They don't like, certainly their colleagues, much less the staff or the public to ask questions, to read things. They don't, that's the last thing they want. So I think it's really awesome that we finally have someone up there that does their homework and isn't afraid to ask the tough questions. Like, yes, why should so much authority be brought to the Planning Commission? No. And then, oh, then the city attorney is all saying, "Oh, it can be appealed." So that was their way of attempting to fool and silence Mr. Horn for asking the tough questions. No, in fact, everything should indeed come kind of automatic to the City Council instead of being buried in the Planning Commission, which of course is where the real fraud happens.
Thank you. Next speaker is at the end? Okay, thank you. Thank you for the presentation to the consultants, Jenna and Andrea. I would like to make a motion, actually, I would like to make a motion to accept this ordinance with an amendment to include or establish an Arts and Historical Commission to oversee this, this, this ordinance. I want to make sure that we are getting individuals that have the historical knowledge and background that we would like be part of this ordinance and not just go through the Planning Commission.
I second that.
May I say one thing? I think if that's the will of the council, we can absolutely do that. We probably can't adopt it tonight, and we'll probably have to draft additional language for creation of the new commission and add that in and bring it back.
We can do that quickly.
Yeah.
Okay. So we just need a motion.
Okay, I make that motion.
I second.
I'm sorry, the motion was to--
To--
Accept it with the amendment?
--adopt this resolution with the amendment, the creation of Arts and Culture and Historic Preservation Commission to go with that.
So we, what staff would do is we would come back with language to create that body, and what the qualifications might be-- and what the qualifications might be. So you're not voting on first reading. We'd have to republish it and re-vote, or rehear the first reading with that language because it's a substantive change from what's in front of you. But that's not hard to do.
Could we adopt this and then add it? No, it would have to be...
What you'd end up doing is you'd end up having to take out of it, well, you could adopt this and then come and do it the second reading, and then...
No, I just, we just want to, we just want to start it and start it correctly.
You can't adopt it on first reading and then make changes without going back to first reading.
Right.
So I think what you should do is just table it with the direction to bring it back, with adding a review body of some sort, which we will define and put in qualifications and that kind of language, and we'll bring it back, and then you will adopt it on first reading.
Are we in agreement?
Is the city attorney okay with that?
Would you please vote? Do we vote on this?
Yeah.
Okay, let's vote.
Mayor, before we vote on that, can we take a motion in a second to close a public hearing?
Yes, I make a motion.
So moved. I'm second.
Please vote.
Oh, man, I screwed up. Sorry.
The motion to close the public hearing is approved unanimously with Councilmember Alvarez absent.
So now, I am making a motion, I need a second to introduce the ordinance with the amendment, or to direct staff to come back with the amendment adding the creation of an Arts, Culture and Historic Preservation Commission.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
The motion is approved with Councilmember Alvarez absent.
Thank you, council colleagues. Now I will open up public comment on agenda, consent calendar, and non-agenda items. If you did not receive a number card and wish to speak, please proceed to the back of the room to be issued a number card by city staff. Once again, before we begin the public comment period, I would like to remind members of the public that the city meeting rules contained in the Downey Municipal Code prohibit any conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. Copies of the meeting rules are located in the back of the chambers. Speakers who violate these rules and cause disruption will receive one warning, and they may be removed from the meeting. Violations of the rules of decorum for council meetings may also result in an administrative fine under the municipal code or citation for a misdemeanor under Penal Code Section 403. The city council acknowledges the right of the public to address issues that are within the city's jurisdiction, Downey, and invites the public to do so during the city council meeting. However, this right must be balanced with the need of the city council to conduct the public business in a fair and efficient manner, free from disruption or disturbance. We expect that everyone who participates in this evening's meeting, from the members of the council here on the dais, to staff, to the members of the public in attendance, do so with respect and dignity. Please refrain from using profanity, name-calling, or behaving in a way that disrupts this meeting. This includes yelling, whistling, booing, screaming, and any other outbursts that disrupts or disturbs the meeting. Any conduct that interferes with or disrupts persons we're addressing the city council. Any conduct that interferes with or disrupts council members while they are speaking, and any other conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. I remind speakers that your comments must be addressed to me directly and not to any other council member, city staff, or the audience. City Clerk Duarte, did we receive any written public comment to be incorporated into the record?
We did not, mayor.
Okay, how many speakers do we have?
We have fifteen, mayor.
Okay. Each speaker will have two minutes to address the council. Speaker number one may come forward.
So we're looking at wells, and well, oh, well, the mayor said that our drought relief wells are doing very well. But a couple of years ago, we heard the wells under Mr. Assistant, Mr. Esquiuie was that we were being screwed, that these wells were never finished being built. And that's the reason why Mr. Garcia, the congressman, the new congressman, was here, because we're trying to delegate how to get more money to steal to fix, repair, and replace these old well, well, wells. Aren't you not surprised that Downey just likes paying taxes for things you're not receiving and getting? Right, officer? I'm glad you got your camera on, because this is all protective speech. And I will clarify that. This is First Amendment protective speech. I got the floor. I control the podium for those two minutes. And then, we go into the knuckleheads' report on the multiple children enrolled in city recreational classes. Like, we really need more of that. Why don't you hire teachers with BAs and master degrees that can actually go into our schools and produce children who can go into college reading, writing, and spelling, as opposed to the nonsense you suppress me, censor me, and monitor me to be under your control of government? No way. This is my First Amendment for you. Forty-two SC 1983 politely. God bless America. And Snyder versus Felt, U.S. decision of the Supreme Court, 562 U.S. 443, is what I'm submitting into the record, along with Brandon Riordan versus Ohio. No offense, a dirty nigger. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number two may come up.
This is the public record that I use my information. Mike Greenspan, a ruined butt-kicking Florida Gator. Oh, you guys got this. Number 11, adoption of the Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Downey and the Downey Police Management Association. Wasn't that a great race for mayor in L.A.? Not the Caruso commercials, but the independent expenditures, $5 million from the police union. So let's give them more money, so Downey can have its own commercials on TV. Maybe you'll even break the $5 million record of the Los Angeles Pig Department. After all, that's what you do. You give them money so they can spend it, and they spend it for their own selfish purposes, and it's our tax money. So you're going to get an across-the-board raise of 4% each year for the next three years, nowhere near keeping up with the rate of inflation, but then that's overlooked because we just put a happy face on it. Well, let's, so one day I'll be watching independent expenditure commercials from the Downey Police Management Group. A few, what's a few million, five million, six million, seven million amongst my critics. And as I look back, the tobacco law enforcement grant, folks, we subsidize tobacco farms, so now we're going to give a grant? How ridiculous. Well, that's, I guess that's life. And I'm not going back to Florida. I'm going to stay here. I don't care who, or what, or where it was said. In beautiful downtown Burbank, maybe when Mr. Scott was city manager there, and the guy, Harry Neer, said, "Go back to Florida, you Jew." Well, this Jew will not go back to Florida, you anti-Semitic, anti-Christ Catholics, and stick it up your ass.
Thank you. Speaker number three may come up.
Okay, I'll keep it simple. I know I'm supposed to direct it to you, but I wanted to thank the chief. Ten years ago next month, I dropped dead in my living room. Downey Fire Department brought me back and dragged me to the hospital, and I've been alive since, ten more years. I was able to see the birth of my grandson Saturday, which was phenomenal. I didn't see it, but he, you know what I mean. I'm just grateful. I don't care what kind of raise we give our police and fire department, I'll pay it because in my life, I'm priceless. I don't know about you other people, but my life is priceless, and I intend to keep, continue paying for the city police, the city fire department. They're an excellent department, and they've done wonders. I'm glad we have a city council that listens. I don't know all of you, matter of fact, I don't know any of you, to be honest. I only know the mayor. I'm proud that we have a mayor that will listen. You don't have to agree with her, and she may not agree with you, but at that point, I'll take it offline and show her, hey, this is what, it's called respect. That's also part of life. But again, I'm grateful, I love Downey, I'm proud to be here, I've raised my family here. I can't honestly say I can afford to retire in California because it's so dang expensive, but thank you. I owe my life to the City of Downey Fire. I was literally dead. I just, I can't say it enough. I, you know, I have nine stents in my heart now, and I've had four other heart attacks, I've had a stroke, but I still work eighty hours a week. I'm not going to roll over and keel over. But thank you again, city council. Thank you, chief, chief, Mrs. Chief, I don't know how you say it, but whatever. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Speaker number three. Oh, four, four. It's hard to keep track, BC, but yes, number four.
In some circles, that's offensive. Should it be allowed or not? I don't know. Got the pronoun wrong. Sorry I missed the meeting yesterday. I would have loved to have heard the situation of priorities. Didn't happen. I would have loved to have heard about Rio San Gabriel Park, right next to the riverbed. Is that a federal issue? The Army Corps of Engineers, did they build that? I'm not sure. That may be their issue to deal with. Maybe that's having something to do with the park. Rehabilitation of the wells, we need money, mayor claims. Expanding Columbia, do we own that, or is that federal? Police Department Command Center vehicle, we always support our police. I don't know if we need a vehicle for such a thing. Fictional District Number Five representative said we have like forty drones or something like that. Now, I don't know why we need them, I don't know why we need this vehicle. What are you preparing for? I mean, oh, but I will say one thing, as a segue, let's consider having more public hearings, and let's consider not leaving our police force understaffed in any way, shape, or form, and let's approve a third police captain for them, so that they have enough manpower on the ground and in the office and coordinating to protect us. And it's also our job as residents to protect them as well, and also the fire department. I'd like to thank both, that's why we keep them private, and they can do a good job, and they can pick you up when you're dead on the floor and transport you and things of that nature. They do a good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Speaker number five may come up.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I'd just like to speak on behalf of the Recall Committee. Today is a day we've been waiting for, for a long time. More importantly, what the residents have been waiting for, for a long time. As everyone knows, the vote was concluded, the results were in, on February 10th, and we're here tonight to hear the results from our city clerk. Ninety percent, nine zero percent of the voters spoke with a resounding yes. Three thousand, over 3,300 voters said yes. We want a chance for a revolt, we think there's somebody that we deserve better to represent us, as this councilperson, Councilwoman Alvarez, has not. So we want to thank the residents for bearing with us and for going door-to-door. It was an experience, it definitely was an experience, but it also showed, as today is a heart day, it showed the heart of Downey, and it showed today that character counts. It counts in the way we live, how we speak, what we say, how we represent each other, and transparency. So we are looking forward to seeing a new person in that chair to represent us. I also want to suggest that you're discussing the commission and commission positions in District Three, that perhaps with the person being gone, the councilperson being gone, that those commission appointments also be vacated, or selected at least by the current council for replacement until November, and they can be assigned by the new person that will be there. So again, thanks to the residents, the Recall Committee thanks you, and have a rest of a good evening, if we can hurry up. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, if we can hurry up. Speaker number six may come up.
Good evening. I live in District Three, and I was a recall volunteer. I spoke with hundreds of people, and over and over again, I was asked, "How did this happen, and why wasn't she vetted?" And here's my answer: We let it happen. I have lived in Downey for over fifty years and watched council members come and go. No politics or agenda, just a desire to serve their city and give something back. And it was working, because Downey continued to attract residents who wanted to be a part of our safe community with good schools, our own police and fire department, and a well-managed city hall. Well, we became complacent, and we took it for granted that no one with a personal agenda would want to take Downey in a different direction. Why wasn't she vetted? Maybe it was naive, but I don't think many voters thought it was necessary to vet a candidate running for our city council for a criminal pass. That all changed with our last election. This was a wake-up call for Downey. I know this because of the overwhelming support for the recall, not only from District Three, but from the volunteers and the donors in Districts One, Two, and Four. And with the election of Claudia Vermette, Hector Sosa, and the appointment of Timothy Horn, and the selection of our new city manager, Roger Bradley, it looks like Downey is now going in the right direction. And with the upcoming elections in November for District One and Downey, One and Three and Downey, we'll have another opportunity to prove that from now on, we will make sure our representatives will be transparent, trustworthy, and competent. It all starts at our local level, and together we can make a difference. Thank you, Downey.
Thank you. Speaker number seven.
Lee Squire, Vietnam veteran, civil rights advocate, mayor and city council. Subject: Proclamations for One National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day that was January the ninth of 2023. I'm still requesting this. Two, a proclamation in honor of Black History Month, which is the month of February. I'm still asking also for the Third Proclamation, Jewish Liberation of Auschwitz Day, which was January the 27th. I wear this Vietnam veteran hat in honor of Black History Month. First, to state that during the Vietnam War, it was us who was the first fully integrated United States military. Second, to honor the war for civil rights that led to the Federal Civil Rights Act of 1964 as to race, nationality, and religion. Black History Month is about history, not propaganda or politics. In closing, love takes courage, whereas hate takes cowardice. God bless America, God bless the nation of Israel, God bless my military and my veterans. God bless my military and my veterans, and God bless law enforcement officers and their families at all levels of government. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Speaker number eight may come up.
Hello. You all know me. I sort of was afraid to come up here and speak from my heart because I had others would probably get mad at me for saying actually something nice about my city and my council members. I love my city and my council members. I've been here thirty-seven years now in Downey. And I really, I have to thank you all, certain people individually. I love working for my police department. I've been there over five years and I love it. So I want to thank you for that, for hiring me for that. My Parks and Rec Department, I'm a commissioner for that. And I want to thank Councilmember Sosa for keeping me on at the Parks and Rec because that's so dear to my heart. I want to thank, I've belonged to the Chamber of Commerce for over twenty years and I hold that very dear. So I'm very proud of that. Also, I'm a twelve-year member of the Downey Alx Lodge, and I'm so proud of that, all representing Downey. And I just want to say, thank you for letting me serve my city of Downey for all these multiple jobs. I do without a lot of sleep, but it's worth it. So I want to say something positive for my city. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanne, and thank you for your service. Hello, please come up. Ms. Julia Emerson.
Honorable mayor, thank you. I'm Julia Emerson of the Southern California Gas Company. It's great to be back. And I want to say that Councilman Sosa did a fantastic job of representing you and all of Downey at the SoCal Gas unveiling of the H2 Innovation Experience. It's the first hydrogen home and microgrid of its kind in all of North America, and it's right here in Downey. Thank you. But to be quick and short, I also want to talk about high gas bills. Yes. Prices have been top of mind for a lot of customers that have received very high bills in January. Fortunately, market prices have started to drop significantly, and the next month's bills are probably going to start to look as though they're easing, although still higher than last year so far. The market, you see, changes each month, and I wanted to make sure I could explain that a little bit. SoCal Gas, the gas company, we do not set the price for natural gas. Instead, national and regional markets set the price. We buy the gas elsewhere and transport it here. And we charge to transport the gas, but we do not mark up the price of the gas. That means my company does not profit when the price of gas goes up. But we do try to offer programs to help those, especially who might be of low income. We have a website, socalgas.com. Of course, a phone number that's easy to find. You can also reach me, and I know that your wonderful city clerk knows always where to find me if anyone has any questions. And they can refer anyone to me. I would be happy to try and assist. And also, please know that California Climate Credit is going to be advanced by the Public Utilities Commission, and everyone's going to get another fifty-dollar approximately grant on their bill, a rebate on their bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Julia. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Hi. Hi, Ignacio.
Hello, my name is Ignacio Gonzalez. I'm with Southern California Resource Services. I'm providing information on our agency for the newer members who have not been with us. We've had a tradition of having council at our events going back at least six years, seven years that I've been there. You'll see flyers there toward the back. Briefly, we have several events. And what I want to highlight, and I want to make sure I spend time highlighting, is we are bringing back our Disability Pride Parade and Festival in October here in Downey. We had the first one in twenty sixteen, and it was a big community event. Lots of people participated. We had, we had, you know, high school bands. We had candidates. We had Chinese dragon dancers. We had a bunch of people. It was a big community event. We're going to bring that back. We're very happy to bring it back to Apollo Park Sunday, October eighth. We're also doing a youth summit at Cal Poly Pomona. We had twenty, it's going to be for high school sophomores, juniors, and seniors. First time they're away from their home. Kids with disabilities, we're teaching them self-advocacy, employment. We really want to help. That's our focus, helping the youth to get away from public benefits and finding a job, going to college. We're, so we're really about helping our youth moving forward. I also want to take the time to acknowledge the police department came out in December. They sent two officers with their mental health team to speak with the youth because we have, like I said, young adults with disabilities who are weary about the negative outcomes they've seen with police encounters in the news. So they came out, they spoke to the kids, the kids asked questions. We interacted, took pictures, had pastries. Everybody had a good time. And I think there was a more mutual understanding as to the needs for the requirements that the police are under and also balanced with the needs of each, the special needs of each, of each person. And they presented us with those stickers that denotes people that with disabilities live or within a car. So thank you, everybody, and we hope to see you in October. Thank you.
Thank you, Ignacio. It's always a pleasure to see you. Speaker number eleven. Oh, there you are, John.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council and staff, good evening. A couple of quick things. First of all, welcome to the dais to our new council member, Mr. Horn. Secondly, with regards to District Three and the recent election, assuming that the results will be verified this evening by the council, I understand the next election will be held on November seventh. Comment I have, why does it take so long to have the difference between that election and the time the new council person will be elected? That means that particular district, Number Three, will be out, will be without representation during that time. And it should be revised if the council can do that at all. The next thing is, today is Valentine's Day, and I would suggest that all of us in this room surprise someone and tell them we love them. Now, I love everyone in this room here. Except for one or two. The last item is with regards to government, federal and state government overreach, how it affects our lives. I've been a very fortunate person to be born in the United States of America and have been given many freedoms that many people do not have. But as time goes on, I can sense, or we all know, that there's been an overreach by not only the federal, but the state government. And we need to do something. I know a lot of times that's being said. Need to talk to our representatives. But I think more importantly, each one of us in this room, if we feel we need to change something, we all need to make an effort to make the change. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Speaker number twelve may come up.
I can take her the mic if she wants to.
It's okay. We can, we can bring the mic over.
Thank you and good evening to our mayor and our city council and to everyone here. Can't hear me? Look, I can talk louder. You know, I'm very fortunate. I have lived in this city and I have known our mayors and our council people. And at this time, the only one I don't know is from my district, and that's Timothy. By the way, I have a son named Timothy. So we want to welcome you. And I want to tell you that we're going to be well-acquainted. We're going to talk about some of the little things that go on in Downey that just need a little tweaking. One of them is code enforcement. You know, we had a girl that was, I think she might have been the head of code enforcement. When there was somebody, an elder person, somebody that really needed help, instead of ticketing them or fining them, she helped them. And how do I know? Because I pulled weeds that high, that high. So that there wouldn't be another ugly house in Downey. We prided ourselves on keeping our city the way it should be. And I still pride myself on that. I love my city. I love all of the commissions that I served on. I served with Antimote Domain. I almost got myself hurt with that one. There were people, like we might have here, and they, when we would have our blue ribbon committee, I, I need a drink later. We would comment, we'd carry on, and we worked for the, oh my heavens. I just talked a lot. But thank you. Happy Valentine's Day to every one of you. Welcome. And I'll see you.
Okay, so first I'd like to talk about, again, the mayor's lies. So the mayor is apparently telling the city attorney that she hasn't blocked people on Facebook. That is just false. So at this point, since she keeps lying about that, it seems that we're just going to have to file a lawsuit and get the records from Facebook itself. Whereas, of course, it could be a lot easier for the city if Ms. Langer just takes the phone, the one that she uses for quote, "city business", which is the one she supposedly is using for the Facebook app, and check because she's lying. She's lying. She does have a ton of people blocked. I've been blocked many times. Other people have been blocked, and stuff gets deleted and quote, "hidden". She hid my comment. So all of that is illegal under Knight versus Trump. So it is time for the attorney to start enforcing the law. So I, next I want to talk about what happened, you know, yesterday. So we had the new congressman. There was supposed to be an open public meeting, and oh, supposedly there was no quorum. Nobody believes that. What actually happened is that Mr. Garcia cannot stand any level of public criticism. He runs away from anyone, from any shade of the political spectrum. You know, when I go to Long Beach City Hall, he literally runs away. He runs away. And that happens with many other people. He cannot stand, he cannot stand to be confronted with his very bad record. You don't have to be on the left or the right or the middle of the road to go to longbeechtruth.org, and you can see that he has betrayed everybody. He has wrecked the city of Long Beach. And now his plan, which he is orchestrating along with Mr. Trujillo and the rest of them, is to destroy the rest of the gateway cities. So that's why we're not voting for him in twenty twenty-four.
Thank you for that. Speaker number fourteen may come up.
Good evening, city council. I'm here again, obviously. I live on Cecilia and Orange Day in Downey. You guys know why I'm here, the curve that we have that we're trying to protect my little girl and the children on our street. City council, I thank you for taking a minute to protect my daughter's ears. That's my job to protect my daughter. I would give out my address to my house to prove that I'm a man. My wife would kill me if I did that. Anybody that wants to come talk to me, Orange Day and Cecilia, I'm usually on my front street. Let you know, come and visit, come see the curve that we have, that we have going on. My daughter wanted to come and speak today. She was way enthusiastic to come. She fell asleep. And she was woken up and then she went outside. So she's outside, she comes and she asks to just protect my street. So if we can expedite some of the reports that you guys need. I know Downey or Norwalk is willing to help. There was a young lady that got my attention last city council meeting when we left. They're willing to help if you guys can help expedite and get something going. Mr. Scott, I appreciate all your work. I know I can't address you personally. I apologize. But I appreciate all your work and thank you. I look forward to working with the new city manager and trying to get this accomplished. I thank all you guys. Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you.
And my daughter be a ray of love for those that need it, so.
Thank you very much. And we will, we will be working on that. Speaker number fifteen may come up.
Good evening. My name is Victoria Smith. I worked in Downey for most of my life. I love my city also. I want to welcome you, Mr. Horn. Thank you for serving. I know it's a big job. I'm here to address the commissioner issue. The voters gave a mandate to the city council with over ninety, ninety point four percent voting yes, to recall Catherine Alvarez. They loudly stated that they want her influence out of the city, out of leadership. And that also then would be in keeping with removing her commissioners. Keeping her commissioners in place would extend her influence beyond her term, which I don't think the voters of Downey would. If they all had a choice, I think they would choose to, to not have her commissioners stay in place. I know, I personally feel that way. You have a chance to show the voters that you heard them as they spoke. And I'm asking you tonight to please consider, let's have a clean slate. Let's start over. We have so many good things going for us now with a new city manager and a new city council member. And I think it's an exciting time for our city. So I'm asking that you would please consider removing her commissioners, Catherine Alvarez's commissioners, and replacing them with either interim or I don't know what you can do, but there has to be something that can be done so that we can get moving on. Thank you.
Thank you for that. City Clerk Duarte, do we have any more speakers? Was that speaker number fifteen? Okay, I will make a motion to close public comment. Can I have a second?
Second.
So ordered by the mayor. Now is the time for consent calendar items. Are there any council members that would like to remove or abstain from an item?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I'm accusing myself of participating in item number four of the consent calendar that's related to the Catch Basis Insert Project due to real property and business financial interests that I have in the area.
Anyone else?
Madam Mayor, I need to abstain from two C.
From two?
C, the minutes of December thirteenth.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Horn. Anyone else? Okay, then I will entertain a motion in a second to approve consent calendar with Mayor Protem Trujillo abstaining from number four and Councilmember Horn abstaining from number two C.
Yes, second.
Miss the motion. Sosa, you second, please vote.
The consent calendar is approved with Mayor Protem Trujillo abstaining from
The consent calendar is approved with Mayor Pro Tem Trujillo abstaining from item number four and Councilmember Horn abstaining from item number 2C and Councilmember Alvarez absent.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to administrative reports. I want to announce that items number 19 and 22 will be pulled and continued to a future city council meeting. So that means we have three administrative reports. Number 18, number 20 and 21. Number 18 is adopt resolution certifying the results of the special municipal election held in Council District 3 on January 31st, 2023, and calling and giving notice of a special municipal election to be held in Council District 3 on November 7th, 2023, to fill the vacancy created by the recall. I would like to, before I continue reading all of this, it has been asked, the reasoning, and again, for purposes of clarification and for the record, I would like City Clerk for you two or our city attorney to clarify or to tell the public, why is it that we cannot fill the seat before the November 7 election?
I would be happy to do that. As noted in the staff report, under Government Code Section 36512, if you call a special election, the special election shall be held on the next regularly scheduled election date, not less than 114 days from the call of the special election. So November 7th, 2023 is the next available date under that Government Code section.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Interim City Attorney. So now the, the items here is, one, adopt the resolution of the City Council of the City of Downey reciting the fact of the special municipal recall election held in Council District 3 on January 31st, 2023, declaring the results and such other matters as provided by law. Two, adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Downey calling and giving notice of a special municipal election to be held in City Council District 3 on Tuesday, November 7th, 2023, to fill a vacancy on the city council as required by the provisions of the city charter and the laws of the state of California relating to charter cities. Three, adopt the resolution of the City Council of the City of Downey, California, requesting the Board of Supervisors of the County of Los Angeles to render full services to the city relating to the conduct of a special municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 7th, to fill a vacancy on the city council. And adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Downey, California, adopting regulations for candidates for elective office pertaining to candidate statements submitted to the voters at a special municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 7th, 2023. Item number B is to provide direction of the appointed board and commission members serving to represent City Council District 3 by making a motion to, one, remove the existing appointing board and commission members serving to represent City Council District 3, thanking them for their service to the city and directing staff to initiate proceedings to fill those seats by appointment of the city council or allow the existing appointed board and commission members to continue to serve in their roles representing City Council District 3 until those seats may be filled by appointment of the city council. Or allow the existing appointed board and commission members to continue to serve in their roles representing City Council District 3 until the city council seat vacancy is filled for District 3 at the November 23, 2023 special municipal election. Or lastly, direct staff to report back at a future meeting with more information before making a decision. That was a mouthful. Interim City Manager Scott, is there a staff report for number 18?
I believe the city clerk is making that report with assistance maybe by Mr. Priest? No, it's the city clerk is doing it.
Okay, thank you. City Clerk Duarte, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. On October 11th, 2022, the city council adopted a resolution calling for the holding of a special municipal election, which took place on Tuesday, January 31st, 2023, for the purpose of submitting the question of recall of Councilmember Catherine Alvarez to the voters of Council District 3. The Los Angeles County Register Recorder County Clerk completed the canvas of the results of the special municipal election on Friday, February 10th, 2023, and the appropriate resolution has been prepared for adoption. The certificate of canvas attached to the resolution as Exhibit A declares the results of the election. And for the record, the canvas was attached to the staff report and copies are now in the back of the room for members of the public and have also been provided to the city council. As a result of the election, a majority of the voters voting on the question relating to the recall of Ms. Alvarez did vote in favor thereof, and Ms. Alvarez was recalled from the office of City Councilmember Council District 3. Pursuant to the Downey City Charter, Section 503 Vacancies, a vacancy caused by a recall election shall be filled by the voters within the district which the vacancy occurs. The election of an eligible candidate shall appear on one special election, and if the officer is recalled at that election, a subsequent election shall be held to elect the officer's replacement. This evening, staff recommends that the city council adopts resolutions certifying the results of the special municipal election, calling and giving notice of a special municipal election to take place in Council District 3 on November 7th, to fill the vacant seat, asking the Board of Supervisors to render full services to the city in regards to the November 7 municipal election and adopting regulations for candidate statements for the special election. In addition, staff recommends that the city council discuss and provide direction to staff regarding the current board and commission appointments for Council District 3. This concludes my report, and I am available for any questions.
Felicia, do we have any council member comments or questions?
Are we having two separate votes on A and B? Because there's options on B?
We can do that, yes. What we can do is take a vote and vote to certify the results of the special municipal election, calling and giving notice for the special municipal election to take place in Council District 3, those items. We can take that motion first and then discuss the commission status. Any, any questions or comments on that? Here and none, I will make a motion. I need a second to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Please vote. So this motion and the second is to adopt the resolution certifying the results of the special municipal election. And, and, yes, thank you. Calling and giving notice of a special municipal election to take place in Council District 3 on November 7th, 2023, asking the Board of Supervisors of the County of Los Angeles to render full services to the city in regards to the November 7 special municipal election and adopting regulations for candidate statements. So that's what we just voted on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. The motion is approved unanimously.
Now, we can move on to the discussion regarding the current board and commission appointments for Council District 3. And that would be item number B, Councilmember Sosa.
18B. 18B.
18B, thank you. We are providing direction on the appointed board and commission members serving to represent the City Council District 3. We're gonna make a motion to, A, remove the existing appointed board members representing City Council District 3, thanking them for their service to the city and directing staff to initiate proceedings to fill those seats by appointment of the city council or allow the existing appointed board and commission members to continue to serve in their roles representing City Council District 3 until those seats may be filled by appointment of the city council. Or allow the existing appointed board and commission members to continue to serve in their roles representing City Council District 3 until the city council seat vacancy is filled for District 3 at the November 2023 special municipal election. Or direct staff to report back at a future meeting with more information before making a decision. How do, any, how do the, the council thoughts, comments?
I have one comment.
Yes, Councilmember Horn.
I do not want the city council making any appointments. So whatever we choose will need to be amended, either one or two. If we choose four, then that is tabled. So if we choose one or two, we, I wish to have an amendment that we do not, as a council, appoint someone for another district because it's a responsibility of the, of the residents. And I don't want to be in charge of that residency. Thank you.
So, Councilmember Horn, if I hear you correctly, you are, you are leaning towards one or two.
Correct.
In either of those choices, you are suggesting that the amendment would be not to have us as a council?
I would amend that we do not appoint.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions, comments?
I have a question. How many commissioners are currently appointed in three? Because I know there were some vacancies.
So currently, there is a vacancy in the Planning Commission for Council District 3. All the other boards and commissions are filled.
How, how many are there?
There's a total of 13?
Okay, 13.
Here's one thing that I like to bring up. I know that we were, I, I don't know in the history of the city, a city council had ever appointed, opposed the appointment of a commissioner. But we did, right? We, we did that with one of her appointments. We, we didn't accept it. That was the first time we've ever done it.
There's been other times.
Oh, has there? Okay. I know that all these commissioners were previously approved by this body. And there were no concerns about any of them. So I don't know if we've heard of any concerns of these 12 Downey residents who have been serving. If we do choose to thank them and open it up for reappointments, I think we should give them a fair shot to apply again for consideration, for us to consider them. I, I don't know specifically who these representatives are currently. So if we're going to consider thanking them all and starting with a clean slate, I would just like for us to give a chance to those people who were previously appointed and approved by this body to apply again.
Madam Mayor, if, if we choose to go that route and, and thank them for their service, I do agree with Mayor Pro Tem Trujillo that, I mean, I don't see any reason why we would bar any, any of these current commissioners from applying again. My, and I, and I get the, I get the argument for, you know, wiping the slate clean. My only concern is, you know, does this affect, and I don't know what the attendance records are for any of these commissions, but does this affect quorum, would this affect quorum for allowing business to get done? That's my question.
Well, it would be similar to the council seats where the majority of, for most of these, the majority is three to be able to meet. The Public Works Committee is the one that, where council members appoint two commissioners, one in the district and one outside of the district. So they require more committee members to be present to be able to have a quorum. I'm not sure how many, but maybe Ed Norris can speak to that?
Six is a quorum on the Public Works Committee.
And currently, the Planning Commission seat for District 3 is vacant as well. So business can continue if a majority of the quorum attends the board or commission meetings.
Thank you.
What, what I would like to, and again, I, I want the, the record to state, this is, this is uncharted territory. This is the first recall in the history of our city. In our city, since its incorporation, it's now 67 years old. 150 since we were founded, but 67 since its incorporation. And we have never had a situation like this. Having said that, our charter doesn't, doesn't specify what to do with commissions. However, the charter does indicate and give us the, the, you know, the, the guidance that once a council member is recalled, we can add a point. That is, the, now the direction goes back to the residents to fill that seat. On the same token, what I would like to suggest is, once again, I think we, we want to be able to, I, I, I hear the concerns and I do believe that the members that we currently have in the commissions for District 2, 5, 1 and 4 have been steady members of those commissions that have been active and involved. And I do think that we, it is our responsibility, if, if we have listened to the residents and this seat is now vacant, that we thank the commissioners for their service and that we allow for that to go empty until the residents elect a new council member and that council member reappoints. I, I think that in, in going with, with it, being in, going in line with what, with what is happening in our city currently. I, even though we are elected by district, I think our residents know, and we have proven ourselves. I know Mayor Pro Tem Trujillo, Councilmember Sosa, myself, we are not just serving merely our district. We are looking at the needs of the entire city, right? Because we have a rotational mayoral position. And so, yes, we may have a closer ear to the ground in the district that we live. However, just because, I want to make it clear to the residents, just because there isn't a body in District 3, it doesn't mean you're not going to be represented. We are here to continue to move the business of the people forward. And, once again, in keeping in line with this seat, the residents will choose again, and then that individual will get to appoint and to choose members that that individual knows. Going back to Mayor Pro Tem Trujillo's point, while this body did approve these members, again, I just want to be, I want us, I want the residents to, to also feel that we in the council are hearing them and that we are not going to meddle and reappoint or make those appointments. Simply that, that, that will be the task of the new council member.
May I inquire of the body? Would we be able to move to appoint the Planning Commissioner? Since that's vacant, is that something we can consider doing? Leaving all the others, but saying, we want to appoint a Planning Commissioner? I do disagree with my colleague that the city council should not appoint. I think this would be the appropriate body to appoint a commissioner in place of a vacant council member. But, I mean, the Planning Commission typically seen as the more, I don't want to minimize the role of the other commissions, but it seems like it's more important, if you will. And so we want to get involved in this. It seems like we should start with the Planning Commissioner. That's the big one on the block, right? Can I see the list? On, on who the commissioners are?
It, it doesn't have names. It just says whether they're filled or vacant. But we could report back.
I want to know, I want to know who's on there in case there's certain people that I would want to be removed. But I, I don't know. Like you said, Madam Mayor, this is uncharted. I am a little, i- i- if, if the intent of the charter was for us to like leave it alone, I mean, they're not even allowing us to appoint. I don't know that we want to go lower and now start messing with the commissioners. But, and, and look, their, their role really is advisory. So I'm not concerned that. So I'm not concerned that if, you know, they're going to.
And again, and if, if, if the council, if, if the rest of the, if my council colleagues, if you really believe that the best move is to have, you know, appoint individuals for those commissions, you know, we, we can dialogue more. I, I do think that it is important that the current commissioners are, are thanked for their service and that those spots are, are wiped clean so that we are getting a fresh start. And again, in the eyes of our residents, it's, it's all new. We are starting anew. And, and I think that is, that is an important message for our city as we move forward. And, and people that, that, yes, that are also vested in this community, that have been around for, for a number of years, that understand the dynamics of, of this community. I will... Any additional thoughts?
I have one additional thought.
Yes, Councilmember Horn.
Since I was part of this and my councilperson left, I felt kind of I'm working for who? Because I worked for my coun, for my councilmember, and rather than have... I needed to know I was working for somebody that was making progress. If I had issues, I could take it to my councilmember. And in my district, which that councilman would respect, rather than another district where you're not in my, you're not in my district, you don't know my issues. And I'm kind of in a flux on that, on that. That's one of the reasons I'm here today, because I'm working for nobody in my district, and I wanted someone to be here. And so I put my application in so that, and I did fill some spots in my, so the people that are working for me, they know who I am, and they're working, any questions, they can come to me. In District Three, you have no one to go to, and I'm kind of in a flux about where we need to go at this point. If we can't decide, then we'll have to go with option four to go back and look at what we need to do in the future, table it for another meeting so we can think about it longer.
Well, I, and I think, again, time is of the essence. And tonight, we voted to accept the certification of those results and to move forward with the election. And I think it's, it's only appropriate that we do the same with this. I, I would, I would like to make a motion to...
You know?
One, remove the existing and appointed board and commission members serving to represent City Council District Three, thanking them for their service to the city. And, you know, if we are not yet fully decided on how we want to proceed, then we can vote on directing staff.
Do, do we want to make an appointment? That also says we're making an appointment.
You know, if I may, Madam Mayor, I just, I just want to say that, you know, I, I appreciate this dialogue, and the good people here do as well. Mr. Horn, who was just appointed, he brings up a very good, valid point. And this is why we're having this discussion. And again, the good people that are here and that are watching online get to, get to hear this out. But I will say that Mr. Horn, again, who was just appointed, brings up a very, very valid point that when he was a commissioner, he threw his name in the hat because he wanted representation here. And those commissioners, who do they go to? Who do they go to when they need, they need resolution, they need help on a certain matter? So this is why we're having this dialogue, based on, based on that and based on the, the overwhelming response and the results of the recall election. I'm, I'm gonna side with, with option number one.
Okay, so we, I, I made a motion. Who seconded?
I would second it.
Mr. Horn seconds, and the motion is to remove the existing appointed board, board and commission members serving to represent City Council District Three, thanking them for their service to the city, and leaving those seats vacant until November, the, the November special election. So we have a motion. In a second, please vote.
So I'm sorry, what option, Madam Mayor?
It's not, it's a hybrid.
It's a hybrid.
It's a hybrid.
Thank you, I was looking for it. Okay, so we leave them vacant. Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
The motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, council colleagues. We have number twenty in our report. We've got two more to go. Thank you for hanging on with us. Number twenty is the, to adopt a resolution authorizing the addition of a third police captain. The adopt, this is to adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Downey authorizing the addition of a budgeted third police captain. Interim City Manager Scott, is there a staff report for item number twenty?
Yes, I'll, I'll start, and then I'll turn it over to the chief for any additional comments.
Excellent.
City Council is aware that the chief has asked for consideration of appointing the third police captain position. As you know, we, we once upon a time had three due to budget constraints. The day came when, when that got reduced, along with other positions in the department. But the world's changed a lot. The world's changed a lot since that time. And today, we're in a situation where we, where the chief has determined that it's very important that we actually have a captain in charge of each of our three bureaus. Operations, and I may get the names wrong, but I think they're close. Operations, which I think includes patrol investigations, which is where the detectives are, and the administrative bureau. Each of these have been affected dramatically by changes in policing in recent years. Policing itself has just changed dramatically, and there are many new laws that affect policing. There's issues about de-escalation. There's very important issues about dealing with people with mental illness or other disabilities. All of these are critically important, the training that goes with it. We have communication systems that have gotten way more complicated. The issues of working with other departments, other functions, other agencies that aren't even in the law enforcement area. Policing has become very complicated. It takes more to get things done than it once did. The chief has identified this as a top, top priority of hers, and I am a hundred percent in agreement that this is important and moves forward with. Now, having said that, it's an expensive addition. We all know that. It's a senior-level position in the police department. This year's budget, it's very, very easy to cover that cost. We are way underspent on, on personnel costs. I would say, my position alone, you've saved more than what it would cost this year for this position. In the future, this would be something the City Council would look at in the budgetary context. But I have satisfied myself that the money is there. When you do the next budget, you're going to find that there's resources there without drawing into reserves. And so, for that reason, I'm supporting this. And I would turn it over to Chief Murray for comments she may have as well. Thank you.
Thank you, interim City Manager, Mr. Scott. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. Mr. Scott really did a great job of summarizing the need. And just from a historical perspective, being in the City of Downey for my entire career, I've seen significant changes in the city. And it, it starts off with just the development of the city in itself. It's, the makeup of the city has changed. And then in recent years, as Mr. Scott mentioned, the profession of law enforcement has changed significantly. It's become more complex. And in recent years, it's become more challenging just because of legislative requirements, the challenges that we are experiencing with increased homelessness, mental health issues. And, you know, we take a lot more time on our calls for service. We employ de-escalation techniques, and there's so many more training requirements. But the third captain position is something that we had historically at Downey, and it was just consistent with professional policing. We're divided into three separate divisions, and each one traditionally had had its own captain. We really pared down after 2008, when the recession hit. The next few years, we did a phenomenal job as a city in maintaining stability. And we did it through really leaning out, and we took some hard looks, and we didn't fill vacancies. And over time, we were able to sustain. But we are at that point in time where we are really being taxed. And we do pride ourselves in providing the best, most professional policing services around. We enjoy the support of our community, and we don't want the service levels to change. Getting that third captain position really sets the foundation for moving forward. And this is just, for me, a first step in looking at the policing needs of our department. In recent years, we took over the servicing of the L.A. County areas at the Rancho property. We've seen the development of the Kaiser Hospital, the Promenade, the Landing. So just the dynamics of the city have changed. And I think we need to look at the future staffing needs. But in order to do so, we need to have the foundation. And the three captains allows each one of those management positions to really focus on the unique challenges of their divisions, as Mr. Scott said. So we have field operations, which is all of our patrol officers and dispatch. So they are dealing with everything that's going on 24 hours a day out in the field and responding to calls for service. And they have the most personnel. Our detective bureau, we do a lot with a very lean staff. And, you know, they do all the follow-up investigation. They do, you know, they're, they're outside of the city limits. They're sometimes out of the state. They oversee arrest and search warrants. We have a narcotics unit, a gang unit. And so they have unique challenges there as well. And really, our hardest-hit area is probably our administrative staff. When we did lose positions back in 2008, we, we had to reallocate some resources, and we really leaned out administration. But the challenges presented to us in recent years really fall on administration. A lot of the assembly bills and Senate bills that have been passed require more data collection and more reporting and transparency in terms of releasing of police documents and personnel files. But that all takes work. It takes oversight. It takes working with our, our city attorney's office and just kind of vetting through that information, making sure that we're not entering any type of liability issues by releasing documents. We should not be videos. We should not be. The, the demands on that unit of the department have been the heaviest, and we're really running thin. But I think this is the right move at the right time for the city, and I'd be happy to answer any questions any of you might have.
Thank you, Chief. Council colleagues, any questions, comments? Hearing none, I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
And this motion is, once again, authorizing a resolution authorizing the addition of a third police captain. Made a motion. Mayor Protem Trujillo second. Please vote.
The motion is approved unanimously.
And again, thank you for hanging with us. It is 9:16. We're trying to, to get out of here in time. But important business in our city, so thank you. The last item in our agenda tonight is number twenty-one, the appointment of City Manager and adoption of resolution approving employment agreement. I take it, interim City Manager, that our Director of Human Resources, James McQueen, is providing the report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item before you this evening is a resolution appointing Roger Bradley as the City Manager and approving the corresponding employment agreement. As part of council's approval, Senate Bill 1436 requires agencies to report out certain information prior to changing the compensation or benefits of executive employees. Under this law, agencies must report a summary of the recommended changes before voting in the open session portion of the meeting. Upon the retirement of the prior City Manager, the city began a nationwide search for a replacement, utilizing the services of his executive search firm. Through this process, the city received a total of forty-one applications. The City Council then conducted interviews with the most qualified candidates. Through this process, Roger Bradley was selected to fill the City Manager position for the city. Mr. Bradley has over twenty years' experience working for different governmental agencies and currently serves as the Assistant City Manager for the City of Corona. Mr. Bradley also has a master's degree in public administration and an undergraduate degree in political science and business statistics. The employment agreement with Mr. Bradley contains the following provisions: A five-year term beginning March 14th, 2023, through March 14th of 2028; An annual salary of $287,456.04, consistent with the salary of the prior incumbent; Auto allowance of $300 per month; A $10,000 per year contribution to an employer-sponsored retirement plan. All other fringe benefits for Mr. Bradley will be consistent with those provided to the city's executive staff, consistent as adopted by council resolution. Sufficient funding for this position is included in the 2022-2023 budget. And this concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, James. Council colleagues, any comments, questions?
No, I'm prepared to make a motion that we approve the appointment of our...
A second.
City manager.
Excellent. So having made a motion and a second from Councilmember Sosa, go ahead and please vote.
The motion is approved unanimously.
Before, before we adjourn this meeting, I would like to ask City Clerk Duarte to please remove former Councilmember Alvarez's nameplate. And I would also like to direct staff to remove the entrance photograph tonight as well as any other photograph on the third floor. And also, I know the website and everything else will be, because we took action tonight. All of that needs to, needs to be done as early as tomorrow for the website. But the photo and the nameplate comes down tonight. The City Council meeting is now adjourned in memory of the victims of the earthquakes in Turkey and Syria and the lives lost due to COVID. Please, a moment of silence. Thank you. This meeting is now adjourned.